February 20th, 2024, meeting of the Fitchburg City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting, please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and city of residence. Seeing none, at this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent Counselor Boishman, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
It would be an honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Boishman?
Here.
Counselor Kuchar?
Here.
Counselor Cregan?
Here.
Counselor Cruz?
Here.
Counselor Gina Charlie?
Here.
Counselor Fleming?
Here, remote.
Counselor Green?
Here.
Counselor Shilts?
Here.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Here, Moley.
And Counselor Walsh?
Here.
President Zarella?
Here.
We have 11 members present.
Thank you very much. There is no one signed in on Zoom for public comment. If there was anyone in the audience wishing to make public comment, please approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and city of residence, and the agenda item on which you wish to speak, and then you will have up to two minutes to speak on that
Good evening, Counselors. My name is Rick Healy. I am a resident of Fitchburg, but I'm here tonight as the owner of Foster Healy Real Estate. My company represents the owners of 580 John Fitch Highway that you will be considering the order of taking this evening, the former Dunkin' Donuts site. And I just would respectfully ask you to consider suspension of the rules since to facilitate having this matter taken care of this evening. The owners have been very patiently waiting since really last June, as the city's gone through their due diligence for financial, environmental, and legal processes. And they've been very patient. We hope that we can conclude this this evening. I think there's no question of the importance to the city of the improvements to the intersection of John Fitch Highway and Lunenburg Street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment at this time? All right, without further ado, we will get down to our announcements. The next meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place on Thursday, February 22nd, from 4:00 until 5:30 p.m. in Room 205 at the Fitchburg State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate. We have a training announcement for all members of boards and commissions in the city of Fitchburg. There is a training offered by the Massachusetts Office of the Inspector General's Academy detailing things including fiduciary duty and board member responsibility, the basics of Massachusetts open meeting and public records law, fraud awareness and prevention, and making meetings more efficient and effective. This will take place here in the Legislative Building on Monday, March 25th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Please email Fitchburg City Clerk Joanna Bilotta at jbilotta, that's B-I-L-O-T-T-A, at fitchburgma.gov by March 8th, because seating is limited, so you will need to register. Light refreshments will be served, and if you have additional questions, please contact the OIG Academy at ma- oh, is this word that says IGO?
IGO training.
Oh, it is IGO, not OIG.
That's what he put.
Okay. And then, the City Clerk's office would like to remind you to please fill out and return your 2024 census. You can mail it, drop it off at City Clerk's office, or drop it in the drop box outside City Hall, but please make sure it is signed. The last day to register to vote for the preliminary election, or for the primary election, rather, is Saturday, February 24th. The last day to request a mail-in ballot is February 27th at 5:00 p.m. Then, early in-person voting starts Saturday, February 24th, and runs through Friday, March 1st at City Hall. The primary election itself is Tuesday, March 5th, and polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And all vote-by-mail ballots must be received by 8:00 p.m. on March 5th. That concludes our announcements. There is, at this time, no report of the Appointments Committee, so we go to the report of the Committee on Records. Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Council President Zarella. We have examined the records, and they appear to be in order.
And commotion to accept.
Second? I have a motion and second, seeing no objection. Passes by unanimous consent. We have several communications from her honor, the mayor, an appointment letter of Miles Phillips Wilcox as a member of the Fitchburg Human Rights Commission for a term to expire March 5th, 2027, Jill P. Lucius as an associate member of the Fitchburg Agricultural Commission for a term to expire March 5th, 2025, Amanda Koch to the position of executive director on the Council of Aging, sorry, of the Council on Aging, term to expire August 25th, 2025. This is an appointment to complete, excuse me, to complete the term of the former executive director Jennifer Brennan. Thank you. And then, Michelle Antaya Shibarasi as a member of the Fitchburg Trustees of Public Burial Grounds, term to expire January 28th, 2027, and Charles E. Sternamolo as a member of the Fitchburg Historical Commission, term to expire February 1st, 2027. Those all stand referred to the Appointments Committee. You guys are gonna be busy next week, or next time around. Then we have two promotions in the Police Department. Provisional Lieutenant Stephen D. Bastian to the rank of permanent police lieutenant, and Detective Robert C. Hughes to the rank of permanent police sergeant.
Good evening, Counselors.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'll start off by Chief Martin, who's unable to be here tonight. He wanted me to express his apologies for that, but he's not feeling well. I guess his loss is my gain, as I get to introduce two officers that I've worked with for a long time for promotion, that I think are both excellent candidates. We have Lieutenant Steve Bastine. He started with the Fitchburg Police Department in 2011. He's been very helpful in the Training Division. He's a firearms instructor, which he's done for many years. He first became a sergeant in 2021, and he's been a provisional lieutenant since 2023. Provisional means there was no certified list at the time, so there was an interview process, and Lieutenant Bastine was selected. He then took the test this past fall. The list was just certified last week, and he did get the top score and top it. So he's remaining in his position, as he's earned it. Rob Hughes has been with the department since 2006, mainly in the Patrol Division. He's been an accident reconstructionist. He helped out in dispatch a tremendous amount when we were in a staffing shortage several years ago, and he became a detective in 2023. So I'm honored to present them both to you and ask for your approvals.
Thank you very much. Are you prepared to swear them in?
I am. If I choose.
Would you like to be sworn in this evening?
Yep.
Come on up. I'll ask that everyone clear the bench, please, so as not to photobomb.
Congratulations. I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
All these incumbent.
All duties incumbent.
Upon me as.
Upon me as.
A, well, I want to do a permanent police lieutenant and a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
And a permanent police lieutenant for the city of Fitchburg.
A permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
So congratulations.
I thought we were gonna shake their hands.
If any one of my friends who graduated from the prison system, they're gonna be out in a year or two, 20 years, and you get your pension.
Mike Bastian, 84, birthday. He's younger than me, but I'll tell him. I wrote that on his Facebook page.
You were staying off Facebook.
I do. I just saw him. I got a notice, I had it written in there.
We will now proceed with our agenda. We have two reports that have been filed. One, 01724, is, oh, actually, I'm sorry, there's a communication from the Planning Board. 27223, this is the Planning Board's recommendation regarding the petition of Counselors Kuchar and Fleming to adjust the solar zoning. This will be referred to Legislative Affairs. Then we have 01724, the annual report of the City of Fitchburg Auditor's Office for the year ending June 30th, 2023. Small correction, the initial agenda said independent auditor's report. This is actually our auditor's office's report. And then, also, 04724, the annual report on OPEB liability for the year ending June 30th, 2023. Both of those are on file with the City Clerk, so with consent, I will waive the reading. All right, seeing no objection. Report of the Finance Committee. Counselor Gina Tally, although I will ask the Chair to please hold the report on 00824 until the, until such time as that and the Legislative Affairs Committee report on it can be considered simultaneously.
Mr. President, I would ask, if there's no objection, that I, spare me waiving of the, spare me to read it? It's very, it's extremely lengthy. It's three pages.
If there is, if there is no objection.
The meeting is on fatv.org. Go watch it, and that, you'll learn everything you need to know about it.
And with one exception, I'll note, all the votes were unanimous, so there's no detail that's being obscured here. So I would ask for a motion on the report of the Finance Committee excluding 00824. So a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the report of the Finance Committee excluding 00824. If there is no objection, passes unanimously. Next, we have the report of the Legislative Affairs Committee. I am also going to exclude 00824 for the moment. We had 27023, Counselor Fleming on behalf of Ward 5 residents to relocate the election polling site. That was held pending further work and investigation. 00724, James C. Pappas and three signatory voters to amend orders 234-03 to correct errors in the title record. That was unanimously approved. 00924, an ordinance amending Chapter 157-94 to add a Section 169-10 to, wait, no, I'm sorry, amending 157-94 and renumbering Chapter 169-10 to 169-11, creating a new 169-10 entitled Duty to Remove Snow or Ice from Motor Vehicles. That passed unanimously. 01624, Counselor Boishman to amend Chapter 16958 of the City Code with respect to penalties for violations of snow parking vans. That was unanimously approved. And 03624, Counselor Fleming to accept local option statute, Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 139(c), exempting dogs owned by persons over 70 from dog licensure fees. That was approved by a vote of four to one, with Counselor Van Hazinga in opposition. Any questions?
I got one question.
Go ahead.
On 036-24?
Yep.
What happens if you're not in favor of that, and I want to vote against that one?
We can pull it out.
I'll wait to see it pulled down.
All right, any other questions? Counselor Gina Tally?
What was the order that Counselor Boishman wanted?
03624, the dog licensure.
All right, so I'll make a motion to accept the committee's report excluding 00924, 01624, and 03624.
And 008, please?
And 008.
Okay.
So just adopt the committee's recommendations on 270-23 and 007-24.
All right, I have a motion to adopt the recommendation of the committee as to 270-23 and 007-24. Do I have a second? I have a second. Anyone on the motion, or any objection? Seeing no objection, we will pass that unanimously. We now have 00924, 01624, and 03624 before the council. Do I have a motion on any of those?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve all three?
Yes.
All three?
All right. Anyone on the motion, Counselor Gina Tally?
Two of the three I don't support, so I, can we package?
Can we take these one at a time, then? All right, can I have a motion or, or comment, whatever, on 00924, the snow and ice removal from motor vehicles? Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In opposition? One in opposition, Counselor Gina Tally. Motion passes by a vote of 10 to 1. 01624, this is the increased penalty for snow parking ban violations.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and second to approve on the motion. Counselor Cruz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I, with respect to the counsel from Ward 2, I believe this has an opportunity to disproportionately affect low-income individuals who live in multiple-unit housing, and I am against it. Yield the floor, thank you.
I would, I would just note that I think that is, I would agree, but maybe not quite in the same way, in that, given that violation of snow parking bans impedes the movement of emergency vehicles and so forth, I would be particularly concerned about the residents of our densest housing areas if their roads were obstructed by parking ban violators and there were a medical emergency, a fire, anything of that nature. So I will be supporting this. Anyone else on the motion? Counselor Gina Tally?
Voicing my agreement with Counselor Cruz. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Boishman?
Mr. President, I just wanted to tell my fellow counselors to the right and to the far left, to the right and to the left of me, the reason why I put this petition in is classing us to taxpayers $100 an hour to hire people to come into our city streets and plow. I went back today, and I spent all day looking for some articles, and I'm just gonna read one to you, and this was done, not this past year, but this was done after we went up to $30 a storm. And this happened on Day Street. And it says here, he said, "Try to get this car dug out on Day Street so the plows can come back and clean the area." They couldn't plow the streets because the cars are parked on the street. Now, I believe that, I believe that we are not asking the residents a lot. We're only asking them to move their cars approximately, approximately 20 times, maybe 20 or 25 times a year, if we're lucky. This year here, I think we, five times? Five times? And what, I think there was one time, they went out and they gave 256 parking tickets. I think that's pretty close to the number, but that was in the whole city, really, for $30, and then you gotta go back, and if you're, me being me, and they don't do a good job, I'm the first one to complain, that they may make the street wide enough. And my biggest rape, my residents in Ward 2 couldn't get around sometimes, they get stuck, because the streets went plowed right in this particular year. So I'm not trying to pick on any group, I understand that, but we do have parking areas where people can park their cars, and sometimes, if you live in an apartment house, you may have to get up early to let the other guy out, so he can back out and go to work and pull back in. It's, like I said, 20 times a year, and I think it would be unfair to everybody. So that's why I put the petition in.
All right, anyone else on the motion? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
In opposition? Two in opposition. Motion passes nine to two. And that will be the, I'm sorry, both of those passed votes were the first reading of their respective ordinances. 03624, this is the local option statute exempting the dog licensure fees for dog owners over 70. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. On the motion, Counselor Boishman?
I'm not in favor of this petition. I'll tell you, basically, I'll go by my own family, my brothers and sisters, there's five of us, they have dogs, and the most, my brothers and sisters are over 70, so that means they're gonna get, save money on this petition, but who's gonna end up paying? We pay, I believe, and I wanted to talk to Chief Martin, but he's not here, I think it's $150,000 a year for the dog officer. So are you asking the residents that don't own a dog to pay for the person that owns a car, a dog? You're only talking eight, nine, to $15, when I sat in that thing? Really? Nine to $15? And it's gonna kill the person that can't, that has a dog? If you can afford a dog, and you can afford to bring him to the vet, and you can afford to pay $80 to go and get a haircut, then you can afford a dog. And, and if you can't afford it, you shouldn't have a dog. I don't, I think it would be unrealistic to put that bill on residents that don't have a pet. I really believe that. I, I think it's wrong that I should pay for your dog, because if you feel that way, then pay for the gas for my car, and you're all gonna say, "I'm not paying for your car." You own a car, pay for your own gas.
I'm not 70 yet, Counselor. You wouldn't be paying for my dog.
So that's why I'm voting against it.
All right, Counselor Fleming?
Yes, with all due respect to counsel in Ward 2, a lot of these elderly, well, senior citizens 70 over, their dogs are, 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 they're family, they have nobody else, their dog is their family, and they're living on a fixed income, and everything else goes up. You're not asking them to get rid of a family member to, for $15 or $25 a year, come on. I said, we're not asking a lot. These are our seniors, they've worked all their life, and they're living on a fixed income. Give them some respect and void that payment for them. We do it for all other sectors in the city. Let's do it for this particular one. Don't ask them to get rid of their dog, because their dog is their family. Thank you.
Counselor Cregan?
Yeah, I spoke on, I spoke in favor of this petition, and I'll speak in favor of it now. I know that $9 may not sound like much to many people watching or listening, but $9 is a lot of money to a low-income pet owner. I, in, in my organization, we sometimes distribute food, sometimes distribute funds as needed. I know that there's one lady in Fitchburg, she has four dogs, and she is very grateful when we, when my organization and others are able to contribute. So for her $36 a year, which would be a couple of weeks' worth of food, that's one less thing to worry about. And as my colleague in Ward 5, I appreciate you bringing this forward, Counselor Fleming. I am fully in support of this. This is something that is, is nice for people. Do we need to do this? No. Is it nice to do that? Yeah, it's, it's really nice, and I think it encourages responsible pet ownership, because, you know, how, how wonderful to have this bonus. You turn 70, and guess what? You don't have to pay that $9 or 15, you know, moving forward. So I am in favor. Yield the floor.
Thank you. Counselor Gina Tally?
When it comes to issues like this, it, it sometimes confuses me, because on the one hand, we wanna be understanding of people's economic conditions, and yet, when we vote on, let's say, a water rate increase, we don't make exemptions for people who have to pay that water bill. We have an exemption in the Assessor's Office for taxes, tax abatements, based on income. I, I agree with Counselor Boishman. I mean, if you can afford a dog, or several, and the veterinary, veterinary bills, and the food costs, and the, and the, and the, taking care of those pets, I, I'm, I'm embarrassed that I didn't know that the fee was only $9. I mean, I don't believe I'm sounding heartless here, because I can just, I don't have a dog, I had cats my whole life, but I know having cats, you're talking several hundreds of dollars a year, if not thousands, when you add the food and everything. I think it's a weak argument to make that if we don't do this, we're burdening people for nine bucks a year, when they've gotta pay eons more than that every year to keep their pet. And I think it's, there's just as many people in our city that are on low incomes that this will not apply to. So the argument about income, for me, doesn't hold a lot of water, because there's a 30-year-old who's making minimum wage, who has two dogs. Maybe they need the animals because of medical issues or something. They have to pay this fee, so I think on a case-by-case basis, they're, Counselor Fleming's heart's in the right place, but on a case-by-case basis, I think things like these need to be looked at in the totality of the issue, and I just, I don't believe that this warrants a waiving of that fee, for the reasons stated. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Counselor Fleming's hand, and I will get to you in just a moment. I just wanna note that I noticed- I just want to note that I noticed there's one thing that isn't really being discussed, and I don't think it really came up at Legislative Affairs either. It's true, we have elderly people who make plenty of money, we also have poorer residents who are younger. However, we're talking about, well, if you can afford a pet, you can afford the fee. Yes, but, for our most, for our older residents, many of them aren't making the decision to get a dog for the first time and saying, "But I can't afford the nine or fifteen-dollar fee." In many cases, the dog, at least in dog years, is about as old as the owner, and it doesn't really make sense to tell them, "Well, if you're cash-strapped, if you're living social security check to social security check, then maybe you should give up your dog," because you clearly can't afford it. You know, yes, they they are managing to afford, most of the time, pet food, veterinary care and whatnot, but that may be taking them right to their last dollars. And given the relatively low number of license applications that this would affect, I don't think it's really going to make a difference to the city's ability to pay for animal control officer or anything like that. I would be surprised if, now, I, this is entirely off the cuff, I have not researched the numbers, but I would be rather surprised if this cost the city more than maybe a thousand, two thousand dollars out of the entire year. That's, at the city level, that doesn't, that doesn't buy us lunch. So, Councilor Fleming?
Well, I want to thank both you and Councilor Jeanette Hawley, because you both made my point. With the with the prices of water and sewer and everything else going up, it is, it's more difficult for these people to to come up with that extra nine dollars, because the vet bill goes up, and as you had said, they're not going out and buying new pets. This is just to, for the 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 animal they have right now, the dog they have right now. So, and maybe their fee's going to be waived, but we have more and more people purchasing pets that are younger that will make up for that, the other end where we're losing it. So I don't think it's going to cost the city anything, I really don't. I think it's going to be a wash. Thank you.
Counselor Walsh?
Thank you. And I would just like to add that that this does not prevent someone who is over seventy and who can't afford it to pay for the license, and I'm sure that there will be people who say, "I know I don't need to pay this, but I'm going to go ahead and do it anyway." So I, it's, it then reduces that number again. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Jeanette Hawley, second time.
Oh, I was just going to give an informational point, because it was referenced earlier, the the budget this year is for the revenues on dog licenses is seventeen thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's what we budget, in your department, I believe, for revenues to the general fund.
Sounds about right.
Seventeen thousand.
Counselor Cregan?
Thank you. I meant to include an announcement, which is that on February 25th, and then again on the first Tuesday in March, which is the fifth, we are going to celebrate Pittsburgh schoolchildren who have contributed drawings to go for the dog license poster contest that we have done since 2018, Mayor, somewhere around there.
License poster, what are we, four, five?
Yeah.
Yes.
Exactly. So the the raising of awareness for dog licenses, I I know has only increased, and we have over seven hundred kids' drawings that we had to review, and the clerk's office got to review, and the animal control and the police chief reviewed, and then in a couple of weeks, we'll have these great posters, that then will be up at City Hall, will be in the kids' schools, will be other places, the library and other public places. So I think that that awareness level only has gone up in the last five years, and kids know, because of the visits, the visits that we make in school, how important that is. Every dog they meet that's a therapy dog, jingle, jingle, they see the tag, they ask, we tell them, even if they don't ask, we still tell them. So we're, again, there's an awareness raising that is for real, so just wanted to add that.
Thank you. And lastly, I'll just point out that, I'm sorry, my mind just went blank. Right. I I am not myself a huge pet lover. I don't have pets, I don't particularly want pets, I don't dislike animals, I like other people's animals, I just don't see, have the desire to, you know, have responsibility for one myself. But I know many pet lovers of all ages, and I'll tell you this, if it does come down to a situation where a person who's had a dog, the same dog, for five, ten years, suddenly finds themselves unable to pay for the license, what isn't going to happen is that they get rid of their dog and sell it off to someone who will license it. What happens is they'll just keep it and not renew the license, because, you know, these people love their pets, they're not, you know, they're not fun possessions to play with, they're, you know, they see them as family. So they're not, it's just going to be a question of, do they pay the fee, and therefore we at least know who has pets and the pets are being well taken care of? You know, do we, if we waive the fee, or do they just go on owning the dog and not tell the city that they own the dog? Because it's not like we're going to do do inspections of senior citizens' homes to see if they have a dog. So if there's no one else, oh, Counselor Boishman?
One thing to say, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Chair, and to the council on my right, and I understand what you're saying, but if you don't get a bill, you don't donate, really, if you don't get the bill, you're not going to give. As much as your heart's in the right place, you're not going to remember to pay. I'm not going to stay here to wait till January 1st and my dog license to pay, you're just going to forget about and say, "Hey, I saved myself fifteen dollars." It isn't, and I want to make it very clear, don't, you're making it sound like I'm a meanie here. I'm not a meanie. I was using my family for an example, and my family alone, we got five dogs, five people over seventy, five dogs.
Mm-hmm.
Really? There's five dogs, and if you do fifteen dollars a dog, it's what, seventy-five dollars? That's just my family, not counting, Sally said, I think it was Sally that said, she knew somebody that had four dogs.
Yep.
So another four dogs, and that fifteen dollars is sixty, and it adds up. And I look at it, to me, to be quite frank with you, if you have a pet and you love your pet, like I love my pets, you know, you're going to take care of them, you're going to take the property, and the fifteen or nine dollars is not going to break the bank, it's not going to, and I maintain the fact that why should a person that doesn't own a pet pay for somebody else's pet? The dog officer, when they don't own a pet? They don't own a cat, they don't own a chicken, they don't own a bird, they own no pets whatsoever. Why should they pay? I don't, I just always get amazed at this, everybody wants, everybody to pay, but nobody wants to pay. They want somebody else to pay, and I don't think it's right. I really don't think it's right. If I own a pet, let me pay. This way, when they take them down to get a haircut, cost me eighty dollars every six weeks, it was like a human being, but it costs that much money to get a haircut for the dog, the dog. And it's a beautiful dog, too.
You start going to jelly.
I yield the floor.
On the subject of donations, Madam Clerk, would it be permissible or simple to add a box to the application sheet or something, to say, "Would you like to donate a license fee of X amount?"
I believe we could do that, yes, because we don't send out bills for dog licenses. Every, we used to do it every year on the census, but now we alternate the years, because on municipal years, we put the vote-by-mail application on the back of the census, because we're already mailing out something, so, and then the years of state, we then do the dog licenses, what we did this year. So we don't send out bills.
Okay.
So, and if someone over seventy pays, we're not going to refund them, because it's up to them to know not to pay. We're not going to cut checks and reimburse the nine dollars if they, and it says that in the MGL, that it's not refundable if if you do pay the dog fee.
All right, anyone else on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
In opposition? One, two, three in opposition. Motion passes by a vote of eight to three. Now, if the council is willing, I am going to continue to hold the two reports on 008 until we quickly go through the other motions, the other orders, just because I know there's going to be discussion on it. We have orders 03824 through 04124, which all stand referred to the Finance Committee. Does anyone object to waiving the reading? All right. Then we do have 04224, on which we have a request for suspension of the rules, an order that we adopt the enclosed order of taking to acquire the parcel known as 580 John Fitch Highway for public, general, municipal purposes, specifically the redesign of the intersection of John Fitch and Lunenburg Street, for a total amount of five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Motion to suspend?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for a two-thirds vote?
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Jeanette Hawley?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Shultz?
Yes.
Counselor Ben Haslinger? Oh, we lost him.
He's probably flying out right now.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Zerola?
Yes.
So that passes ten to one, ten to zero.
Motion to approve, 04224.
Second.
I have a motion and second?
We do have a presentation, if you were interested in seeing that.
Counsel, would you like to see the presentation? I'm sorry, I forgot you'd sent that to me. Oh, we have Counselor Ben Haslinger back as well. Counselors, would you like to see the presentation?
Sure.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's great to be here this evening. Lisa Mead, for the record, Mead Teller-McCosta, city solicitor. And I just wanted to do a quick presentation on the taking of 580 John Fitch Highway. As you know, the city council approved the, authorized the appropriation for this taking in November of last year. The authorization was for five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which is the agreed-upon purchase price. Where there's agreed-upon purchase price, you need not have an appraisal, and so that was addressed in that agreed-upon purchase price memorandum of understanding. Once the city council takes the vote this evening by two-thirds vote, then the mayor herself will actually issue the order of taking, which will be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. The city has to record that within thirty days and make the money available as soon as the order of taking is signed by the mayor. So we'll make that, all those documents are ready to go, and we'll make that available. I think there's a couple of things I want to point out about this property. So here we have the, at the corner of Lunenburg Street and John Fitch Highway, what everybody knows as the former Dunkin' Donuts site, which is what the subject matter is of this taking. There were some items of record that we needed to make sure we dealt with. So here's an old plan, there was a, at one time, a sewer easement that crossed the property that has since been released, so that's not going to be an issue on the taking. Similarly, and I'm just going to scroll through the easements themselves, I'm going to go down to the plan, there is a Unitel easement that we're going to discharge as part of this taking. The taking will take that easement. Obviously, we don't need the Unitel easement anymore, because it feeds the building, and the building will be removed. The next two easements that exist, we are not going to touch. This easement actually was granted to this property owner, the owner of the Dunkin' Donuts, to allow access on the adjacent site. Because we're doing the taking, that will continue, the benefit of that will continue on to the city as part of this taking. Then we have, you see in this down in the corner there, right here, which I'm going to slide over here, is an access easement, which was of more concern, but not actually with the DPW Commissioner. So this easement, if we were to take it, we would be taking a benefit that exists for the adjacent property owner, which would mean that we would need to compensate that adjacent property owner. So we are going to do this taking subject to that easement, so the easement still exists. I had a conversation with the DPW Commissioner, as well as the Executive Director of Community Development, and they believe that their plans can work around this easement, and you'll work with adjacent property owners, so that that won't be an easement, I mean, a question. There's some questions about curbing that's going to go along there, and how that access is going to be granted, but the Commissioner is completely fine with leaving it here. So that's a quick overview of the taking, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Counselors, any questions?
I have one question, thank you.
Ms. Walsh?
I I'm just curious, what what is that property?
Mineki?
Oh, okay, that's what I, that's what I thought, I just wanted to confirm.
And if you, if you were to drive by today, they have cars that are parked there, so it's a non-exclusive easement?
Right.
Which is the, it's not exclusive to them, it's it's non-exclusive, so both parties can use it. And so it it benefits both sites.
That makes sense, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Make a motion, wait a sec.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second. Anyone on the motion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for a two-thirds vote?
Counselor Boishman?
Definitely, yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Jeanette Hawley?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Shultz?
Yes.
Counselor Ben Haslinger?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Zerola?
Yes.
It passes eleven, zero.
Thank you very much. And with that, we are set on the taking. We also have 04324, an order to authorize the sale of the parcel known as 70 Clarendon Street through the side yard sales program, as recommended by the Side Yard Sales Commission. That has already gone to city property, then to side yard sales, so it does not need to go back to city property, it is properly before us this evening. Counselor Cregan, would you care to give us an update from the Side Yard Sales Commission?
We have, I'm sorry, I, I'm not able to do that. Joanna, can you help me out here?
Quite all right.
Well, I think if it's already been through the city property, I think we could just make a motion to accept.
Second. I would agree. I mean, I I certainly trust the Side Yard Sales Commission to do their due diligence.
I'll join Side Yard Sales, I'm not, I'm not coming in.
All right, so I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. We have 04424, Counselor Fleming, on behalf of Maritza Rivera of 478 Pearl Street, to install a blind driveway sign, that stands referred to public safety. 04524, Counselors Fleming and Walsh, on behalf of Lisa Bailey, to install additional stop signs at the intersection of Billings and Arnhow Farm Roads, and to make that intersection a three-way stop, that's public safety. And 04624, Sasha Automotive LLC, to petition for a Class II dealer's license for the property at 285 River Street, that's going to public safety. Now, we have 00824, order that the city of Pittsburgh hereby appropriates and transfers the sum of forty-two thousand four, two-hundred-and-forty dollars from Law Department Personal Services to Law Department expenses for the appointment of the city solicitor. Counselor Jeanette Hawley, the report of the Finance Committee on this item?
Finance met on February 15th, and by a vote of three to two, did not recommend the petition, the order.
Thank you. And it was a similar vote in Legislative Affairs. We also discussed it quite extensively. It is now before the council, and by similar, by the way, I mean exactly the same, three to two, just different counselors. And I know everyone is going to have something to say on this, and everyone will have their chance. I'll just start off by saying that I've been one of the sharpest critics of this move since it was still only a rumor. And, like I've said, while many of my concerns have been assuaged, I still have several. That hasn't changed. However...
Mr. President, should we make a motion on the, to accept the report first, before we start debating, or no?
No, actually, typically under Roberts' rules, we would have to do that. Under our council rules, we can discuss a matter before a motion is made.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And, so, ultimately, I am not the mayor. Ultimately, no matter what anyone here on the bench, you know, may feel about this issue or any other, for at least the next two years, this is our mayor. And we, as a council, have to have a productive working relationship with the mayor for the city to continue forward. For that reason, I intend to vote in favor of this transfer, subject to an informal agreement that has already been reached to put an ordinance change before the council to clean up some of the legalities. And, like I said, at Legislative Affairs, it's, I feel that in order to move forward, particularly in the role that you have all entrusted me with as president of the council, I have an obligation not only to my constituents, but also to the council as an institution, to ensure the functioning of the machinery of government. And for that reason, I think we ought to take a leap of faith, extend a little bit of faith, to invest in a positive relationship going forward. If this doesn't work out, if any of our concerns or worries are realized, we will have multiple opportunities, the earliest being the budget hearings, to revisit this topic. But in the meantime, I say, give it a shot, and let it, let it succeed or fail on its own merits. That said, I believe I first had Counselor Green.
Thank you. First, I would like to say that my prepared statement is not a personal attack on the administration, past solicitor, or potential new law firm. It is only an observation on how we should do business better. I, along with my colleagues, have received numerous phone calls from concerned citizens, either after attending the meetings or watching them on FATV. Concern that the process was not communicated or transparent. Mayor, you need to do better. With these two buzzwords, you ran your whole campaign on how you would be better and do better, yet at the first opportunity to prove those points, you lacked in both communication and transparency. I don't find it pleasant to have to remind you to do better. My hope is that we, as a body of elected officials, find a way to continue to provide vital law services to our residents and to our city departments as well. We have been told in the past as a council body that we are not to micromanage departments, but even according to your own words on Facebook, you state that if we don't pass this transfer of the money, that this community will have dire consequences. May I suggest that if there were these legal issues that were brought to you, that were brought to your attention shortly after your confirmation, that you could or should have placed these issues on the agenda for executive session, so that we would all be aware of the current concerns. After spending many hours speaking with department heads about the what and how they are working with the Law Department, I find it even more disturbing that our beloved library project is now, quite frankly, underwater, or that the Airport Commission has a longstanding legal issue that is losing altitude. Again, please take this opportunity as a reset. Bring balance back to the table so that we can accomplish continuing doing great things for our residents and our community together. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Some of us have the opportunity to discuss this quite extensively in both Legislative Affairs and Finance. I myself, I had the opportunity on Finance Committee. I would encourage anyone who would like to see more extensive comments to definitely check those out on fatv.org. Thanks to our terrific partners at FATV who have the meetings up on demand. So having said that, I'm going to be brief tonight, as we, like I said, spent quite a bit of time discussing it already. I'll just repeat a few points. I brought this to upper discussion with the previous administration during the budget debate. I thought it was a good idea then. I think it's a good idea with the current administration, so I haven't changed my mind there. Ultimately, it comes down to my belief that the residents of the city will get better legal representation with 16 lawyers over one. So I'm going to continue to support this, this, this change in the way we structure our legal department, and I look forward to, to some, some changes, to the positive things that I think will happen to this. Thank you, Mr. President, I yield the floor.
Thank you. Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I serve on Legislative Affairs and Finance Committee, and on, in both instances, I voted against this. I was uncomfortable with how this was done. I'm still uncomfortable with this, but I guess I'm more accepting of my level of discomfort at this point. I completely understand that the city solicitor is the mayor's appointment. I think, however, that it would have been common courtesy, as well as transparent, where the administration was changing from long-term past practice, not only in the appointment of someone from outside Pittsburgh, not just one attorney, but a law firm, and more importantly, changing the way that the city solicitor is compensated, to have had a meeting with the council president at the outset. I also thought it was discourteous to the council, to the mayor's staff, and the city solicitor, when she failed to appear at the council and committee meetings when this item was on the agenda. If the mayor's going to propose changes of this magnitude, she should appear at the city council and/or committee meetings when those proposed changes are on the agenda. We were told that the mayor could not attend the Legislative Affairs meeting because she was at a contract negotiation for the Pittsburgh Teachers. That negotiation ended at 7:30 PM, which is approximately the same time that the Legislative Affairs meeting began to discuss the city solicitorizing item on the agenda. Her staff is new to the job, new to municipal affairs, and they were unable to answer the questions that city council was proposed. She could have and should have been there. Initially, I was opposed to the appointment of a city solicitor from outside Pittsburgh. However, although Pittsburgh is very special to those of us who were born and raised here, or have chosen to make this our home, it is not unique. Pittsburgh has similar problems that are common to other cities and towns of its size, and these are most likely problems that a law firm who specializes in municipal law, such as MTC, encounters fairly regularly. This is not the way we have done things in the past, but that alone does not necessarily mean it's wrong for Pittsburgh. I do want to clarify, this discussion should never have anything to do with the prior city solicitor, Mr. Pusatieri, at all. Each mayor in the past has made his or her own choice as to who should be appointed city solicitor, so a change in appointment is not a reflection of bad service, nor is such a change unexpected. Mr. Pusatieri served the city well for many years. Pittsburgh is changing. I could be wrong, but I'm guessing that Mr. Pusatieri may have been one of the last of the local attorneys willing to devote a large portion of his time in his practice to the city of Pittsburgh, because it's a big responsibility. I'm still concerned that the contract signed with MTC is not lawful, but I think there are ways to work around that, which are lawful. After speaking with a few department heads, my sense is that they seem to be very satisfied with the representation that Lisa Mead and her colleagues provides. Responses to requests for legal advice have been timely and on target. Lisa Mead, at the last meeting, I think it was the Finance Committee meeting, assured the council that in the 15 years or so that she has been representing municipalities, they have not gone over the targeted budget for legal services. We were told that this arrangement will be more transparent because the invoices, bills from MTC will show the number of hours worked on city business. To the extent that trans, to extend that transparency across the board, I would like to see the assistant city solicitor compensated in the same way. In other words, a bill reflecting an hourly rate, reflecting the number of hours of legal services. It makes no sense to me to, to, that the two positions will be compensated in different ways. Pittsburgh has a lot of work to do that requires legal advice and contract approval. This work will grind to a halt if we have no city solicitor in place, so I'm willing to vote for a transfer of funds to move Pittsburgh in a positive direction. Unless there is some unusual reason that we incur extraordinary liability for legal services from MTC, however, I for one will not look favorably upon a request for funds beyond that which was allocated to compensate the city solicitor on an annual basis, the $106,000 plus, before this contract expires. I yield the floor.
Thank you. I'll just briefly note, oh, I'm sorry, I see Counselor Fleming has her hand up.
I just put that up. Yeah, I'd like to speak on this. I may be on vacation, but I've been watching everything in these meetings and what's being said. One of the biggest concerns I had was the people that questioned whether or not the prior city solicitor did the work and worked the hours they said he was going. I found that an attack on him. Whenever I called him, I had, it may not have been a quick response, but I received a response, whether it was during working hours or whether it was after hours. He took the time to explain the things that I needed answered thoroughly and without rushing me. And I found that personal attack really, it just bothered me to my core. So I wanted to point that out. I, I'm also concerned that, where we did have that access, we would try a solicitor. I am concerned that we're not going to have that same access. I understand that the new firm will be in-house, one day a week for us to speak in person, but we will have access to, through email and phone calls. I guess my concern is if we start going over the budgeted hours, that they're going to be told to not speak with us because we need to maintain that budget. And that is of some concern to me, because I did spend several hours, especially with Ward Five issues, with the prior city solicitor, and he was on a salary, so his time was what he was getting paid. I don't have a problem with the, with the law firm, they have a wonderful reputation. I did call around. But I just, I wanted to voice those concerns, and, and my vote, you'll know what my vote is at the end of this, at the end of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor De Natale?
So last night, I heard the mayor make statements on her Facebook page. And it pains me to, to listen to it, because the people aren't given the full story. The arguments that have been made up to this point about why we should do this. We don't want to be obstructionist, we have legal pressing matters before us, if we don't do this, Armageddon will ensue. These are all fear tactics. And if there was that level of concern, then I don't know why, for the life of me, that the appointment was made before the order was passed by this council. The mayor started her statements last night by saying that there was misinformation throughout this whole process, yet, of course, she doesn't say what that is. Then she goes on to say that the prior administration, over eight years, did this illegally. She used the word illegal. She didn't mention anything about the fact that this ordinance that's in question goes back to 1969. Multiple mayoral administrations, not just confined to the last one. And as I talked to President Zarella, it's not illegal, it's inconsistent. It's an inconsistency among administrations on the interpretation of our law. Because many mayors and solicitors interpreted that portion of the ordinance to not, not cover, encompass the Solicitor's Department. Again, none of this was told to the thousands of people who watched this last night. I then heard the council president at the Finance Committee say that the ordinance changes that he's proposing are not tied to our vote tonight. We should do them irrespective of what we do tonight. The mayor said the same thing. The mayor also said in her statement that it's also illegal to hire Mead Talaman and Costa, according to our ordinances, but she did it anyway. Contradiction. Public wasn't told that. So we have to pass these ordinance changes, not to fix errors, but to align ourselves with current practice. So I just want the public to understand that the prior administration, Lisa Wong, Dan Milott, Mary Whitney, Jeff Bean, they were not doing anything illegal. That's just a convenient excuse for the lack of transparency. Then we get into cost. And this is where my central concerns of doing this lies. I have no issues nor dispute with the fact that this firm is highly competent. No issue. My concern is, we are going from a set level of services we've been receiving for the last 50 years, spanning multiple city solicitors, and I have had the privilege of serving under Solicitors Ciota, Barrett, Goldstein, and Pusatieri, all of whom collectively said they've worked 35 to 40 hours. Ciota gave up his private practice because it was a lot for him to take on, Barrett absolved most of his practice, and Mr. Pusatieri had a lot of other attorneys in his office that took care of the business, while he dedicated most of his time to the city. And I don't see how having a private practice with multiple clients is any different from a private firm who has multiple clients. Mead Talaman and Costa, last time I checked, is not only going to be serving Pittsburgh. In fact, they just took on Haverhill, bigger city than us. My issue is the level of service we were getting as a city versus what we are going to get here. And the arguments that my colleagues are making in favor of this is that the efficiency levels of this firm are so robust, to the tune of 50 to 70%, that they're going to be able to do this job that our last four solicitors were doing in one set of time, 50% or less faster and more efficient. And that's where I'm lost. That's where I'm not subscribing to this. Where you have four attorneys saying, "We do 35 to 40 hours a week," and this company is only going to have 14 hours a week, from now until the end of June. Because if you do the transfer of $42,000, plus the $20,000 that hasn't been used out of Mr. Pusatieri's expense account, that's $62,000 for the rest of the year. That's 20 weeks, because they started around the end of January. That's 14 billable hours a week. So we're going, and that includes travel, which, as we know, if they come here, that's two hours off the top. So the maximum is 14, it's likely going to be less than that a week. So my concern has always been going from 30, 35, 40, hell, even 25, down to 12 or 14. That only tells me, from an analysis standpoint, that the proponents of this believe this firm is 50 to 70% more efficient than our last four attorneys, or our last four attorneys were not as efficient as this firm to the tune of 20 to 30%. And I don't buy that. The mayor made comments last night about the city of Lemonster. And then she also invoked Chelmsford. She said the city of Lemonster's budget is $185,000. I've heard Counselor Cruz make that argument, Counselor Van Hazinga, no dispute with the number. Chelmsford, $165,000. The mayor then reads our budget for FY '24, which is $383,603. So immediately when you say that, the number that we budgeted this year is more than double what Lemonster and Chelmsford has budgeted, right? Here's where the critical pieces were left out of the statements. If you remove the city solicitor's salary position, health benefits, and office expenses, and conservatively, outside legal counsel, get rid of them, because they're going to handle everything. That's $195,000 out of the budget for this year. That then gets us to a budget of... That then gets us to a budget of 180,969 because you've still got the assistant solicitor, her health benefits, her office expenses, code enforcement, appraisals, damages persons and properties, registration and other fees, and labor negotiator all staying on because they're not getting rid of Dominello. So our budget would go from 383 to 181. If me, Talman and Costa take that 170 that Mr. Poussetteri was getting and you shift that to them, and this is the same analysis Council Van Hozenga did, that equates to 16 billable hours a week for a full fiscal year to keep us budget neutral. That means that our, that means that me, Talman and Costa's expenses for 16 hours a week for a full fiscal year would be 187,000. So the 181 plus the 187 is 369,000. That is the same budgetary numbers that we've had for the last several years. Budgetary numbers. No matter how many ways I do this math as a 20-year professional in financial analysis, do I get to a scenario where we are saving money in the budget? Oh, but wait. Some of my colleagues and the mayor conveniently cherry pick pieces of the last five years of this legal department's budget. They go to fiscal year '22 where you see in damages persons and properties, we spent over a million dollars. What was not stated by anybody is why did we spend that? Was it because of lawyer legal incompetency? Or is it because things happen in our city that you could have God himself be the attorney and that wouldn't have prevented those things from happening? Has nothing to do with the legal representation. In fact, in FY '19, Mr. Poussetteri went under budget on litigation and special counsel. He went under budget in FY '20. FY '21, he spent a little extra, and FY '22, he spent a ton. And then in FY '23, it went all the way down by 174%. So why are there two years of the last five that that number was big? You all should know why. The mayor especially, because we were in those executive sessions. I'll tell you why, because she didn't yesterday. There have been seven free cash requests from the former solicitor to increase his budget beyond the July 1st number. Insurance deductibles with two large employment claims due to Crocker Elementary School with the pipe bursting. Mr. Poussetteri didn't freeze the pipes and make them burst. Attorney's fees for city insurance claim for fire at BF Brown. The former solicitor didn't set the building on fire. 2020, 133-20, labor negotiation support. We're not getting rid of labor negotiator, so that's going to stay. Next, compensation to property owners for Circle Street Bridge Project, the mass DOT requirement, $15,000. Has nothing to do with in-house salaried services. Here's the biggie that everyone keeps talking about, but they won't say what it's for. They just make it sound like that our former attorney just needed a million dollars worth of outside help. Settlement claim at the airport that predated him, 950,000. You could have the best attorneys in the world, these first five things I just told everybody, they wouldn't have stopped. No one wouldn't have stopped. And why did we pay 950, ladies and gentlemen? Because the advice of special counsel at that time, who will presumably be the MTC going forward, said to us, if you don't settle with them out of court, you're likely going to pay quadruple. Last two items, $100,000 in 2022 for litigation and special counsel for labor contracts. We're not getting rid of labor. 2023, the last one, settlement claims, more settlement claims at the, at the airport, across the street from the airport, I should say, environmental issues that went back to 1950. I don't even know if our former attorney was alive then. So where am I going with this? The arguments on cost don't hold water unless this firm is that much better at 50 to 70%. The last three attorneys do 35 to 40 hours, they're going to do 14 through the rest of this fiscal year, and then 16 for a full year, and any numbers on our budget that are heavy. It's because of unforeseen non-recurring issues that no attorney could have prevented. So this is why I just want to bring light and context to this, because none of this was told to the people, and it was on purpose. So to sum up on the cost, if you take out Mr. Poussetteri's costs, leave everything else in there, and then do 16 hours a week for me, Talman and Costa, which my colleague from Ward four said is more than enough hours per week, your budget is 368,169, no different than our prior year's budgets. And that's more than double Lemonster and Chelmsford. Again, I'm not, this is irrefutable. There's no way to give me a number that's different from this unless you want me, Talman and Costa to spend less hours than 16. So for all the arguments I've heard for the last six months about why in-house salaried attorneys are a thing of the past and don't work well anymore, why does that not apply to the assistant solicitor's position? Why is she still on, on salary? Contradiction. We're keeping her because she's very good. That's not the issue. Why isn't she doing billable hours? Isn't she not being transparent? Isn't she not doing any of those things we said that the former services were doing? So I'm very puzzled by that. Why is this not an all or nothing proposition, folks? You can't say all these things about an in-house top solicitor, but the assistant is sacrosanct. And I'll tell you, I think it's unfair, as Counselor Walsh said. Do you know what our assistant solicitor's hourly rate is? $64 an hour. They're 225. And we complain about health insurance and pension benefits? That's the last thing I'm going to mention. The pension argument is moot because our former solicitor didn't take one. He didn't work 10 years. But I'll tell you right now, for the fact that we had an attorney going back 20 years ago, making less than half of what he or she would make in the private sector, I don't think it's unreasonable to give them benefits if they qualify. And if we don't hire this person in-house, you're not going to see a drop in our unfunded liabilities, which are 136 million, unless Mr. Poussetteri had a pot of gold that he could conjure up at the snap of his fingers. Weak arguments. So I don't see how in the life of me this is going to cost less. All I can see is we're going to get better and more efficient service to the tune of 50 or 70%. And to, in closing, for my colleagues who want to give this a try, fine. I don't subscribe to that because I know, being here 17 years, how this works. The mayor is not going to change course in June. After everything she's said about this, she's not going to change course in June. We're going to get a budget on May 15th with their firm in here, and then the same arguments that have been made the last three weeks to all of you folks about not passing this or else Armageddon's going to ensue, what do you think those arguments are going to be in three months? The same thing. Don't pass this, I won't have legal representation. So the obstructionist argument doesn't make any sense to me. Why are we here then? Every order, grant, appointment that the mayor puts forward, we would be obstructionist on if we don't vote for it. So why are we here? Vote for it because you want to vote for it, but don't have issues with it, but say, I don't want to look like I'm not working with them. Who said that? If anything, the administration hasn't worked with us. As evidence of the fact that it took five weeks before we got a letter, and three weeks till we got the fee agreement, only after I asked for it. So to give it a try, go ahead, give it a try. I will bet my kid's college fund, they're not going anywhere after June. And then it's going to be back on our shoulders to say, I dare you to stop, to stop me from doing this. If you are then convinced at that point it's not working, I highly doubt we're going to change course. This is a done deal after tonight, and I hope it succeeds, but mathematically, I can't get there. And the arguments that have been made about why it mathematically makes sense, don't make any sense. So what I just said for the last 10 minutes, hasn't been said all month. And I know how people are playing this out in the public sphere, why I'm against this. This is what I'm going to have to deal with the next two years, why I'm opposed to something. So I'm, I'm voting against this because I don't believe this will save us money, because the comparison point of why it would save us money would have happened if they were on our staff or not. It's a false comparison. The only way that comparison would make sense is if it's our attorney was sleeping at the wheel, and he was terrible, and we had to end up paying a million dollars because of it. We all know that's not what happened. So I'm not getting the comparisons. They would have faced the same issues. And let's say they don't need outside counsel. They're going to have to spend more time on them because in that airport issue, we had three executive sessions, two with MedStar and one with the environmental, and each one of them went three hours apiece, that's nine hours in a month. So if he didn't hire outside counsel, they don't hire outside counsel, they just got to spend more time. And this argument that there's 16 attorneys, wonderful. They have 40 clients. They're growing every week. Just because they have specializations in certain fields, okay, so one attorney's working on one issue in the city, and the other one's working another issue in the city. Now you've got two attorneys charging 225 an hour. And the access? This is no knock on them. I feel, I'm actually concerned for them because I don't know how we go from 35, 40 hours a week to 14 with travel. So I think Counselor Fleming is exactly right. What's going to end up happening is, because I know this from personal experience because of who the former mayor was, the amount of time he spent with the attorneys, just with them. And as Counselor Zarela said, Walsh, Kuchar, 14 is nothing. And they would know better than me. So I'm not getting this. This has nothing to do with them and their competency. They're fantastic. I just can't bridge the gap. I can't do it. And, and we got, we got an email about Haverhill. The mayor of Haverhill, brand new mayor of Hill, hired this firm. If you read the article though, the mayor was highly complimentary of the former solicitor system. The guy retired. He didn't retire, she wasn't going to get rid of him. So I hope it works, I just don't see how. And if you have something that you need to talk about with somebody at 7:00 AM in the morning, or at 9 o'clock at night, ain't going to happen. Because they're going to be doing this. Jeez, I'm almost up to 14 right now. She's exactly right, Counselor Fleming. That's what's going to end up happening. They're going to be pulled back because we got to meet a budget. And that's why Lisa Wong in 2014, who I know is the town manager of South Hadley, and they're the chief counsel in South Hadley, right? But I read this quote because it's, it's relevant because she was the mayor of this city when she said it, after four years. Okay? She said to that effect, I'll paraphrase, I don't want to bore everybody in waiting. Here it is. In order to make the, this is May 22nd, 2012, Lisa Wong, in order to make the assumptions of the net impact of moving from public to private law, you have to look at the entire equation. You have to look at the outputs. There are comparable sized cities that spend twice the amount Pittsburgh does on legal services, having various outside legal firms. And I can tell you, they do not get that same level of service. They are on call, you have to come up with something you want them to work on, and very rarely are they proactive. And with respect to the salaried position versus the hourly, former assistant solicitor Mark Goldstein said 12 years ago, quote, John Barrett and I think of ourselves not just as attorneys, but as legal advisors, not just as solicitor and assistant solicitor, but we think of ourselves more as advisors, not just trying to keep people out of trouble and avoid issues, but to brainstorm, spend some time dissecting a problem until we can run its course and get a sense of where we want to go with it. And many times that takes a lot of time, and it's not reflected in our billable hours. It's important to note that we want to work through a problem and not just do, okay, this hour you get billed a certain amount for this. We just want to be here to solve a certain problem or prevent a problem. So that's where I come down on this. And for those who don't want to, just want to give it a chance, give it a chance, fine. But I guarantee you, I'm not, this is guaranteed, this isn't going to stop after June, if it fails. And the mayor knows that. She's just going to dare you guys to do it again. Because the same argument applies in three months that it does right now and after that. We just got appointment letters tonight. Should we not pass these because we would be obstructionist? I can't stand that argument. And we should all just go home for the rest of the year. Thank you.
Counselor Kuchar.
Thank you very much. I've spoke at great length at the Legislative Affairs as to why I'm very cautious and about this change. I just want to go off of some of the comments that were made today. President Zarela, you're right, we do have a duty to our constituents, into the body as a whole, but our duty is first to the constituents and where we watch the money go. And that is everybody's responsibility who's sitting at this, at this table right now. And we cannot do our, our constituents a disservice by knowing that this is going to cost more money. Counselor Dean Atali's reasoning is 100% sound. This is going to be a financial boondoggle for the whole city. My fellow Counselor, Counselor Cruz in Ward six, he states that the firm has 16 attorneys. That's going to be a benefit. But I'll tell you one thing, and even the non-attorneys in here will be able to understand, when the hell has it ever occurred that adding more attorneys will actually make things better? It doesn't happen. Zarela at the Finance Committee, President Zarela at the Finance Committee, you added that this firm, with their experience, they wouldn't need to be researching as much. As an attorney yourself, as well as I, I might know the subject like the back of my hand. I still double check, and I'm sure you do too. And I'm sure Attorney Walsh does as well. So I don't see that argument as having, you know, holding any water. Not to mention, this contract is unlawful. It was never approved by the, by the city solicitor, and the current city solicitor sure is, heck, cannot approve her own contract. And it's not in line with the city charter. It's completely illegal. And I'm not going to sit here saying, oh, well, we'll, we'll, we'll fix that. We'll fix that, we'll change the charter. You put in the cart before the horse. Fix the charter first and then bring this to a vote. Until then, I'm not going to fly in the face of the city charter. That's part of my duties, and when we all took an oath, we all took an oath, each and every one of us, to say we will abide by the city charter. By taking this vote and voting in favor of it, we're not doing our job. And anybody who does vote in favor of it, you should reconsider running again. Because I'll tell you, you're not doing your job. And I'm not going to spend much time on this, but Counselor Dean Atali was 100% correct. Why keep a salaried assistant solicitor, solicitor, but yet contract out at 225 an hour for the, for the actual city solicitor? We're going to be spending money hand over fist. And if this gets approved tonight, I can, I can guarantee you that within a few months, there's going to be, hey, we need more money, we ran out. Well, either that, or as Counselor Dean Atali said, our service is going to be much lower than it has been in the past. It was stated in the arguments, I believe it was at Legislative Affairs, but it could have been at Finance, I was at both meetings, even though I'm on Legislative Affairs, I'm not on Finance, but I wanted to hear the arguments presented, that Lemonster rations their legal services. We can't have that. There should be no rationing. We've had 50 years of being able to pick up the phone and say, hey, Mr. City Solicitor, We've had 50 years of being able to pick up the phone and say, hey, Mr. City Solicitor, what do you think? You know, I've contacted Attorney Poussetteri multiple times during my tenure as city councillor. And you know what? Every time I call, he picked up right away, right away. I don't know, I don't think it was professional courtesy. I think he was doing his job very well. And this isn't just saying that I think we should keep Attorney Poussetteri on as, no. The mayor can choose whoever she wants. But you know what? You don't turn everything around and say, you know what, we're going to scrap what we were doing that has worked for 50 years and turn everything around, put it on its ear, and now we're going to be paying quadruple of what we were paying before? It's going to cost the city way too much money. And I have to vote against it as it stands right now. Fix the charter? I might reconsider, but ultimately, it's the dollars and cents, and voting for this makes no sense. I yield the floor.
Thank you. I'd just like to clarify a few points, I'm going to try and go sort of in reverse order because there's been a lot said, obviously, I don't want to spend too much time on this because we've already talked a lot. One is, yes, I absolutely agree, no matter how well you know a legal issue, you still do your homework. However, if you're already familiar with it, you can double check your cases and so forth knowing what you're looking for in the first place, whereas getting yourself up to speed on a new issue takes considerably longer. That's all I meant when I suggested that it is at least possible that the firm's breadth of experience could result in some efficiencies. Also, the ordinance, just to clarify for the council and the public, the particular ordinance that Counselor Dean Atalley was referencing is Chapter 3, Section 31 of the city code, which states that, to paraphrase loosely, department heads can't work other jobs during business hours. And it is true, that was passed in 1969, I looked it up. And as far as I can tell, no administration actually applied it to the city solicitor. As near as I can tell, without asking people who were in the government back then, it appears to me that it was simply understood by the mayor and the council at that time that it was not intended to apply to the solicitor, but due to frankly, an error in drafting, it was not made clear that that was the case. Then the subsequent administration continued the practice and so on and so on. So yes, allowing our city solicitors for the last 50 some odd years to practice outside their role as city solicitor during business hours has been inconsistent with our ordinance. It's not something unique to this administration, the past administration, or even all of the administrations that most people sitting here or watching this can name. It dates back to before most of us had any cognizance of city politics. So I think it is absolutely correct to say that there's no fault to be applied to any recent administration on this. But that is something that we will need to fix going forward, to simply clarify what was always understood to be the case. As to the charter, I have to respectfully disagree with my colleague. I don't think this is inconsistent with the charter. There are certainly some ordinances that need to be cleaned up. But as long as the city solicitor position itself is still a named individual, I don't see any inconsistency with the charter. And if I did, I certainly would not be voting for it, no matter how, no matter what I thought in terms of the general propriety or benefits or lack thereof. What does need to be cleaned up, what is somewhat inconsistent at present rather than a potential future inconsistency which can be fixed beforehand, is simply the part of our ordinance that states that the city solicitor gets paid a salary. If that weren't going to get fixed at all, that would concern me because even though I am certain that Attorney Mead has absolutely no intention of double dipping on, you know, city compensation, it would still put us in an undesirable position to be out of compliance with that ordinance, even with the consent of Attorney Mead. But that can be fixed. And I personally don't see an insurmountable legal issue with going a month or so allowing her to waive her salary before clarifying that she will not actually be entitled to one. That's an easy fix, honestly. I will say, we do have time to, we will have to reevaluate come, you know, come summer, if we decide to do it again, then come next year, we'll continue to take a look. But the thing is, all these concerns are things that we can actively test. And at the moment, our total exposure is $42,000. Even if we roll in the possibility of transferring from other extant legal department line items, we still aren't going much above that. Because most of it is either spent or needs to be held in reserve for other things at the moment. So our total exposure is very low. And I'll say flat out, I'm not going to be rationing my time. Anytime I would pick up the phone and call Attorney Poussetteri, I'll pick up the phone and call Attorney Mead. And then we'll get a comparison point, you know, if it turns out that we hit mid-April and we're already running up against our budget, that's something to revisit. If it turns out that we get to June and we are on target, that's something to consider. The same goes for any of the other practical concerns. That's why I'm saying, let's make a test of it. Let's not change our behavior to sort of put a thumb on the scales in favor of making it more efficient. Let's just do what we do and see if it meets our needs. It either will or it won't. And lastly, I agree. We shouldn't do this to appear cooperative or to look like we're being friendly, collegial, avoid looking like obstructionists or anything like that. Like I said at the beginning, it's not a matter of looking good, it's a matter of building a relationship. Yes, this year, the relationship between the incoming mayor and the council got off to a very rocky start. There were breakdowns in communication. I'm not at all pleased with the way that this came before us. And I've made that very clear, both publicly and privately. However, if we simply decide that that has essentially poisoned the well, then we can look forward to two years of butting heads. On the contrary, I will say that after, starting from a point between the two committee meetings and certainly after the recent Finance meeting, speaking for myself at least, I will say I have received a significant amount and a significant amount more detail in terms of communication, proactive communication from the mayor's office, which is exactly the goal here. Because this city has been doing so great over the last decade. I have told people on numerous occasions that I could not have picked a better time to get involved in city politics, a more exciting time to be involved in Fitchburg's renaissance. We have to make that continue. That is imperative for all of us, and I know all of us agree on that. We can only do that if our government is functioning smoothly, if the branches are working towards a common goal in common conversation. So yeah, it's, this is, this isn't, from me at least, a way of saying, no, you know what, I'm perfectly okay with everything that's happened so far, you know, I don't see any problems here. No, that's not it at all. But we have to be able to move past that, we have to be able to chalk it up to mistakes made and learned from. Because otherwise, I don't know how we keep moving forward. We don't have the power to do it all on our own, mayor doesn't have the power to do it on our own. So let's go. I had Counselor Cragan and then Counselor Schultz.
Sure. Thank you. So I received a letter, as we all did, from the mayor urging us to reach out to department heads, boards and commissions. I immediately did so, I have spoken to almost half of my colleagues on the council since then. I have spoken to 14 department heads or assistants, people on boards and commissions. That's way more than I would speak to if I was working on a news story. That's about how many I would speak to if I was working on 2,000-word magazine story. Because you really want to have that much information. Overwhelmingly, people had great things to say about the former city solicitor. And they had really great things to say about MTC. In terms of the attentiveness to detail, in terms of the responsiveness, in terms of the understanding the problem right away, understanding, having access from other experiences to draw from. And I know that we're really talking about this ordinance. Along with the larger issue of this is a very different system than we are used to and we're accustomed to. But I really took the mayor's words to heart, and if you ask me to do something that involves research, I will do it. And I'm happy, you know, ex cathedra to speak to those that I did not speak to before this meeting tonight about the specifics, but for my part, completely encouraged. And I think that the work of the city is only going to get more complicated. It's only going to have more details. In my conversation with Commissioner Nick Erickson, we both are history buffs when it comes to Fitchburg Public Works. And I was saying the interesting information I had found in the early 1942, like, Public Works report and how the Civic Conservation Commission and the Workers' Project Administration had contributed so much to Fitchburg in the building of roads, the building of bridges, and he said, yes. And there were no environmental concerns at the time. And there were different, you know, rules regarding the city taking, you know, taking property and the building of roads, et cetera. So I had a moment of realizing it's only going to get more complicated. And it's pretty complicated right now. And I'll say this on the record as well, I too found Vinnie very responsive. If I would text him, I'd hear right back, if I needed a call, I got the call. But I do have faith that we will have similar responsiveness as we need it, because that is the goal. I also wanted to, and again, I'll ask the chair, are there other ordinances that cover this particular piece of governance that might be in, might be, again, you're more of a boffin on this than I am, but is there other, does the hiring of the city solicitor show up in other ordinances that may contrast with the ordinance that's been cited?
There's, if you look through the sheet that was passed out, passed around, I don't remember if I gave, if I ended up getting it to the whole council or just the committee, but I can certainly send it to everyone. There are a number of ordinances dealing with the city solicitor that would need to be sort of harmonized with either our current practice or the proposed new practice, or both. Oh, thank you, Counselor. Yeah, most of Chapter 3 from Section 49 through Section 58 and one provision in Section 2111 all pertain to the city solicitor and how the job is done, how, you know, who occupies the role and so on. So, and those are all slated for adjustment if the council agrees, obviously. I don't want to presume that what I've drafted will be accepted, but, and I want to thank Attorney Mead for aiding me in some of the fine tuning of that draft as well. But, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor, I just was not sure if I had answered your question.
You answered a great portion of it, apart from the business. Is there anything, is there anything that seems directly contrary? Like, as an example, having spent many years in the Policy Committee of the School Department and our giant policy book, there were many policies that were directly contrary to what DESI was now requiring us to do. I see my former school committee colleague Walsh nodding your head. And so it was a constant system of re-reading, and I salute retired Assistant Superintendent Paula G. Quinto because she was on top of all of this. But we had this process for doing that, I don't believe we have a similar process in Fitchburg for the city council. We are not constantly reviewing our ordinances, we are not constantly reviewing city code to see if everything is up to date. I mean, Mass General Law does talk about draft horses when it comes, in their whole catalogs of, you know, animal laws. So, and again, there are farms that use them, but I just, my question really is, is there something in our city ordinance that runs contrary or would seem to veer from the path? And if, I mean, do we have, so Attorney Mead has looked at this before the meeting to review?
The draft that I sent over, at least, I can't speak to whether she looked at our entire city code yet, but.
Well, if I could.
Go right ahead.
Mr. Chair, so I have, and the tweaks, if you will, that the council president has proposed, I think are appropriate. I don't think that there's anything contrary at all, I mean, we've had this conversation. So I don't, in my opinion, there's nothing contrary. I think that to several of your points earlier, there are some inconsistencies that need to be addressed, both from the current proposal and past practice that need to be addressed. And I think that the council president's proposals do that, along with some other ones that have come up since, but nothing contrary.
Okay, thank you, I yield the floor.
No problem, thank you. Counselor Schultz.
Thank you, Council President Zarella. I understand the concerns that Attorney Kuchar, Counselor Kuchar and Counselor Dean Atalley have about the cost and so on. But I really believe that it is the mayor's prerogative to name whoever she wants as the city solicitor, and I know it's a big change, but if former Mayor Dean Atalley was proposing this change, I would support it as well. So I'm going to be brief and I'm just going to say I will be voting in favor of this transfer. Thank you.
I yield the floor. And Counselor Brochman.
Got a question for the city solicitor.
Go right ahead.
Did I hear you, correct me if I'm wrong, when you said that we had to hire you on the outside to say, we sue, we always talk about the airport because we get sued and we had to pay a lot of money. How much would it would cost for one of your attorneys to represent the city of Fitchburg on the airport if we had to farm it out, per hour?
So we charge, as a special counsel to municipalities, we charge a higher rate than we do when we're in-house. So it would, you know, I don't know, it would depend on the project, but, you know, somewhere probably around $250, something like that, an hour. Maybe more depending on the issue, but we do, when we're in-house, we charge a lower rate than we do when we're special counsel.
Okay, and then going back to the council to the right of you, to the left of you, I guess. You said, he said that it would cost us double weight if you were doing a city solicitor and say Adam Costa was doing the airport. We would just pay $2.25 an hour. solicitor and, say, Adam Costa was doing the airport, we would just pay $2.25 an hour, a $2.25 piece, right, per piece? Like, you'll get $2.25 and he'll get $2.25? So, a total of $4.50?
So, are you talking about individuals in our firm?
Yeah, yeah.
So, we would all charge exactly the same rate? And it would be on an hourly basis, just like it would be for any work that we do?
All right. If I may, Counselor, I think I know what you're trying to get at. I think he's asking if you had an issue that you were handling, and we were talking about, you know, leveraging your firm and so forth, if you were working in tandem with another attorney in your firm, would we get billed for one hour or two?
Right. So, so that depends, right? It depends on what we, so if we're, if we're doubling up, oftentimes, if we're two of us coming to meetings, we, what we do is we call professional courtesy, and we don't charge for one of them, or we charge half for both of them. But we typically would not charge our municipalities doubling up for the same work on the same matter.
Thank you. Does that, was that what you were...
Well, kind of. My point was, I always just wanted to tell the council, like, the council over there said, there was a lot of things we had to hire outside lawyers for, because of the water breaks, the fire, the airport, et cetera. And if I'm not mistaken, I was, I thought Vinnie said one time when we were talking, we talked to the big black box, which I still hate it to this day.
Careful, that was executive session.
Oh, you were in executive session, but we had to talk to a black box and not talk to a person, and I didn't like it. I made it very clear on that, and because he wanted to save some money for the city of Pittsburgh, and that's why he didn't come. So, I don't know what they charged per hour, but I was under the impression they were getting over $300 an hour or better. So, you know, I don't know. I went to see Jackie, she's not here now, to find out exactly what we paid per hour on some of these cases, you know what I mean? She gave me a rough figure on half a million dollars, but not on, just going back about 10 years. And, and I was just wondering, you know, I'm not, I'm in favor of it. I think it's a great opportunity for the city of Pittsburgh. I'm gonna be honest with you, something new. I think it's gonna be different. I got no problem before. I'll say it again. I didn't vote when these guys brought it up to the right of me and the guy on the airport. And I'll tell you honestly why. Out of respect from Mr. Dina Tally, the mayor, and out of respect from Vinnie, because I talked to Vinnie, and I felt like I was stabbing the guy in the back if I would've said, "Hey, let's do it." And this week, when Marcus brought it up against John Barrett and Mark Ghosting, I felt the same way then. But I always felt that it should be, and I agreed with him back then, that, but I didn't vote his way, that we should've tried farming it all and see where we go. I think it's a great opportunity. I would fall into it. She already offered me the phone number, but I says, "I don't want anybody to say I racked up the price, the cost," because I would have to call her up a couple of times to make sure I understand what she's telling me, make sure I hear her right. Anyway, that's all I want to say on that. I'm gonna be in favor of this. I think it's a great opportunity. And I agree, Counselor, what you said. If we think the price has gone way out of board, we hold the budget. We carry the funds, and we can say, "We'll pay them. This is it. We're just gonna pay this, and then we gotta start looking somewhere else." That's the way I look at it. I get no qualms about that. I think the mayor told me the same thing, so I have no problems with it at all. And I'm not going behind anybody's back. I know how I feel about different things, and I'm point-blank on what I say. So, that's how I am. Even with that phone call that I got the other night. We spend a lot of money on outside, outside people. If they get in-house, and it's gonna be a cheaper rate, let's knock ourselves out and save a buck, and let's win some of those cases and not settle and say, because there's no winner. The only loser is, is the city of Pittsburgh. And I keep on going back to that time with that damn airport. Sorry about the damn word, but the airport really bugged me. Gave a million dollars, plus the lawyer, made good money, and here we are, we're struggling. And I'm really upset with this whole airport thing. And I don't want to give the airport away either. That's not my intent on that either.
Let's leave the airport to one side.
But anyway, that's it. I yield the floor.
All right. I have no one currently waiting to speak, so do I have a motion?
Before you ask that, could we ask Attorney Mead if she has anything to say?
Certainly. Attorney Mead, would you like to address the council?
Well, I do want to thank everybody for their comments related to our firm and our practice. And I would say to you, give us a chance, because I think that you'll be happy with it. I think you'll like our communication. I don't think you're gonna see any breakdown in that. I've already been in touch with a number of you, and certainly the department heads, on a regular basis. So, we look forward to working with all of you, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, would you like to address the council on this subject?
I appreciate the thoughtful consideration, and I appreciate the commentary about communication. You know, you know, when, when I put this forward, I, I didn't think that there would be any concern, and I didn't realize that there would be that concern. When I did realize it, I reached out. So, you know, that obviously was an error on my part. So, you know, absolutely, if there is any concern, I want, I want that communication. I want to know that, so that we can have, we can have that further collaboration and communication with my council. Because, you know, we, we all are in this together. And so, absolutely, anything you need, you know, feel free, please, reach out to me. I can tell you also, I mean, in the beginning of the first weeks, it was, it was very, very busy and out of control, everything happening. So, you know, obviously, you know, things are slowing down now, and they're getting back to normal. So, you know, I'm, we're all available. So, you know, any way that, you know, I can improve, I want to hear that, you know, because I'm here for you, you're here for the city, I'm here for the city. We're all doing the same, we're all doing the same work. So, thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, one thing, could you tell the attorney for me, we've got a big issue up at Ward 2 coming up in March. Make sure she's there. We don't want it there.
I'm sure...
We don't want it there.
We already have an expert in that affairs, talking with the zoning board on that.
All right. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we, that we accept passing it over?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the transfer. Any, I assume everyone has already had their say. Anyone on the motion?
Just for...
Go ahead, Counselor Cruz.
So, we don't need to vote to accept, first vote to accept the report of the committees? We can go right to the transfer of funds?
Good point. Procedurally, we should probably vote on whether to accept the recommendation of the committees, given that both committees recommended against, or at least declined to recommend in favor. I think we can take them together. And to clarify, because the committees did not recommend in favor, if we, if we take a motion to approve the recommendation of the committee, a vote "yes" is a vote against the transfer. A vote "no" would be a vote, not technically in favor of the transfer, but a vote to bring it back in front of council for a further vote. Can I have that motion to approve the recommendation of the committee? Or of both committees?
I will make a motion in the affirmative to approve the report of the committee on 008-24, but I will be voting in the negative when the time comes.
Thank you. And that is, just to clarify, the recommendation of both committees?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the recommendation of the two committees. And again, I'm just gonna state it one more time. A vote in the affirmative would be to reject the transfer of funds. A vote in the negative leaves us open for a further vote on whether to accept it. That being said, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Bochman.
No.
Counselor Kucha.
Yes.
Counselor Cregan.
No.
Counselor Cruz.
No.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
No.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Shilts.
No.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
No.
Counselor Walsh.
No.
And President Zerella. Eight no's.
All right. Motion to accept the recommendation of the committees fails by a vote of eight to three. And now we need a motion on how to dispose of this in front of council.
I make a motion to accept the transfer of funds.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the transfer of funds on, under 008-24. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
Counselor Bochman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucha.
No.
Counselor Cregan.
Yes.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally.
No.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
No.
Counselor Shilts.
Yes.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
And President Zerella.
Motion passes eight to three, and that concludes our business for this evening.
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. If there is no objection, we are adjourned.